This board will come to order. This is the Board of Zoning Appeals, today October 25th, 2011. We do have a quorum here, so we can proceed. Have all the members read the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. So, anybody want to make that motion?
Almost in the group.
Second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, none. Okay, today, we do have some old business. The old business being, appeal the decision of the building official, B&amp;B disposal, 237/245 Chaney Road, Joe and Sarah Boner. And also, item number two, appeal the decision of the building official, Joe's place, 237/245 Chaney Road, Joe and Sarah Boner. Okay. Ms. Kazant-Stanzo, would you present the case, please?
The codes department received a complaint on the two properties in question, 237 and 245 Chaney Boulevard. And this was back when my predecessor was here, Grant Green. The building inspector, building official, excuse me, contacted Grant Green to find out whether or not the zoning for the properties in question was in compliance with the land use operations that were going on the property. Grant Green looked into the property, saw that the, both parcels are technically zoned A agriculture. The two businesses that are operating on the properties are listed as a garbage waste disposal service and a salvage yard. Mr. Green wrote a letter back to Derek Beard in codes stating that the land use operations were not in compliance with the current zoning, because both of those operations should be in an I-3 special industrial district, zoning district. And those two types of operations have to be special exceptions as well. So, my office transmitted a letter to his office, and then he sent out a cease and desist letter to both businesses located at those properties. Since then, they have, the Boners, the owners of the property, contacted the codes department saying that they wanted to appeal the decision of the building official, which is why we're here tonight, to look at the facts, see whether or not, they claim that the two businesses that are operating were actually in operation before the city's zoning ordinance went into effect. In which case, if that were the case, they would be considered a legal, non-conforming land use operation.
Okay.
So, that's where we are.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Do we have the parties of the petition here for present tonight?
Mayor, I'm here with my bill of orders, I'm an attorney.
Would you take the stand, please? Mr. Richardson, would you administer the deal?
Please raise your right hand, sir. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Philip George, 205 Laurel Hill Court, Smyrna, Tennessee, 37167.
Okay, sir, would you like to state your case?
Sure. She's done a good job of setting out the facts of this case. If you will, your zoning ordinance provides that lawful conforming uses, buildings and structures existing at the item, it's supposed to be time, it says item, of the passage of this ordinance or any amendment, there too shall be allowed to remain, subject to the following provisions, and it lists several provisions. And one of the things that you run into in these types of cases, anytime you zone something, and your zoning ordinance was enacted in February of 1990, anytime you zone something and put it into that format, it's already in use. And that's the case in this particular, with this particular land use. This land was used as a salvage yard since the 60s. There's no business records available to show those, the owners of those businesses, because according to the research that I've done, you no longer have those business records. I don't think you keep them very long. I know the county, I was told only keeps theirs about five years. So, y'all don't have the business records reaching back that far. But let me refer you to a case here. This is the case of Bramlett versus Coffey County Planning Commission. And in that case, it states that a use of property that exists prior to the enactment of a zoning ordinance, which prohibits that use, is commonly referred to in the zoning parlance as non-conforming use, exactly what she stated here earlier. And it says, "A non-conforming use is considered to be grandfathered and thus exempt from restriction under the latter enacted zoning ordinance when the use is specifically exempted from the ordinance's application on the ground that the property was being used that way when the ordinance took effect." So, the bottom line is this, when this zoning, your zoning ordinance was approved in 1990, this was already a non-conforming use there. Apparently, the area is now zoned as agricultural, but this use has been going on for a long time. Like I said, there was, there's no business records, but I have here with me, and I'd be glad for you to take a look at these, these are some aerial photographs taken of this area. One of them is from 1969, 1974, well, the 1992 won't do us any good. But I've got two that show what was going on. Would you like me to approach and? Yes, please. I'm sorry, I don't have copies of them. And they're not very, they're not the best photographs in the world, anyway. They're a little bit blurry, but these are blowups of aerial photographs. But this shows 1969. You can see all the activity out there. Of course, this was a, if you look at a bigger blow up, there's more woods around it in that time. But it shows, it shows the vehicles all through that lot out there. It's a pretty good sized lot. But anyway, that was the operation that was going on. And there are provisions in your zoning ordinance to get rid of these if the right circumstances arise. For instance, if they don't use this as that property for a year, if they suspended their operations for a year, I believe that you could, you could grandfather them out, for want of a better term. One of the things that may throw you, and it may be what threw you in this case, the change, there was a change in ownership, Mr. and Mrs.'s, excuse me, it was just Nora Moore. I'm not sure if she was married at the time. But Ms. Nora Moore owned this and had this operation in that, in that place at that time. But a mere change in ownership, I'm referring to the same case again, Mr. Santelli, you're probably listening here about that case, a mere change in ownership does not in and of itself constitute change in the use of the property, nor is it a change in the identity of the persons occupying the property. In other words, if Ms. Moore has a non-conforming use, and she's grandfathered in from whoever had it before her, and they, she sells it to the Boners, then they can continue that non-conforming use, just as they could sell it to somebody else, they could, they could retire, say, "We're not going to do this anymore," and they could sell it to somebody else. But that's my understanding of the law, I hope that's correct. But that's, that's their case in a nutshell. The bottom line is that they're grandfathered in. And I believe that this, excuse me, not this body, not the BZA, I believe that this was addressed previously, back in 2004, because of obtaining some amendments from a meeting of the Board of Mayor and Alderman of August 12th, 2004, when this came up. And in that, under item 24, the City Administrator's comments, there were some codes violation complaints on the Boner property. And it was, and what they said that night was dismissed as it was grandfathered, per Sherri Green, I think she was either the, she might have been mayor at the time. Anyway, that was, that was, that's the best historical thing I could tell you about this. But I'd be glad to answer any questions, if I could.
I have a couple of questions, sir.
Sure.
Do you have anything official documents from the city of Laverne stating that this property was grandfathered in?
Don't need any.
But you don't have any documentation?
No, I don't have a document, I don't have any document where the, where the, well, those minutes, all I have is a handwritten rendition of what was said that night. I don't have a copy of that. I would say that when, when that was dismissed, per the mayor, that was actually under the City Administrator's comments, that probably shows up in the following months' minutes. I don't have those. You might look there.
Did you by chance, on behalf of the petition, or submit those documents to Mr. Beard?
I did not.
I noticed that these photos are, they're pencil dated, but they're not officially dated.
That's true.
Okay. Was there anything stated in the deed to the property from the previous?
No.
There's nothing stated in the deed about being grandfathered?
No, there's nothing in the deed. All the deed does is convey by meets and bounds. They didn't convey the use, nor what I've expected it to.
Any board members have questions?
Your property, present property owner, do they own the property in the year 2008?
In 2008?
Eight?
Eight? I believe so. Is that, that's great, yes.
You have between 2008, 2009, that we, the city did a master map for which zone was which, and they had a year to, to agree or disagree with the city?
Mm-hmm.
You are? Were they?
I don't know if they even knew that that happened.
Okay. But as far as you're concerned, it's still zoned agriculture?
That's, that's my understanding, that it's zoned agriculture right now.
That's right.
But it's still a non-conforming use.
Any other questions?
No, I think he's pretty much answered the ones I had to ask.
Okay.
Just want to clarify, there is no evidence of use prior to the Boner's operation, other than these aerial photographs?
Well, yes, there is. There's plenty of evidence of use. There's hundreds of people in Laverne, Tennessee, that can testify, if need be, if this had to be litigated. Former mayors could testify that this was the actual use of this property. In fact, I've talked to one of the former mayors, and he knows that this property was in that, in that particular use. I did a little background checking, but there's, there's hundreds of people who could testify that this property was in use in 60s and 70s as a salvage yard. Of course, those people are dying out every day. If you wait long enough, maybe they'll be gone.
And from, you said that the zoning went into effect in, excuse me, in February 1990. Since that time, and I recognize it doesn't matter who's the, excuse me, the ownership, has there been any stop in use?
Not to my knowledge.
Sorry, during the time that the Boners have owned the property, was, was there any time when use was stopped?
I'm sorry?
Anytime during the Boners using the property that it was not being used for this purpose?
I don't know. I just represent them. I don't know the specific facts of that. Mr. and Mrs. Boner could probably tell you if they've ceased operations for any period of time.
Okay.
In my discussions with them, they didn't indicate that they had, but you, feel free to ask them. They're here tonight, and you can ask them questions if you like.
Okay. Those are my only questions.
Okay. Anybody else?
Any other questions? The reservation I have, sir, is that some of the members of this board were not even present in the city at the time that you're speaking of. So, the only thing that we have to go by is any documentation that you could present that would certainly make it clear that Mr. Beard was in error, and that, and I don't see that documentation here.
That's fair.
So, that's what my reservation is in that case.
I understand. I hope that the pictures have cleared it up for you, son.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I would like to retrieve those pictures, if I could, if y'all three were looking at them.
You may. Please come forward and get those. Thank you. I'm going to open a public hearing at this point. Are there any individuals here that would like to speak, either in favor or opposition of this appeal request? Come forward, please. Mr. Richardson.
My name is Steve.
One moment, please.
Please raise your right hand. You swear or promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Steve Woodard, 2035 Summit Lane.
Mr. Woodard, go ahead.
Yes, sir. If you'll notice, Mr. George, when he, when he talked about this property, never once mentioned a garbage dump, said a salvage yard. Didn't say garbage dump one time. Here you got a garbage dump, stinks, smells, cats, rats, in the middle of a community with kids. And I've seen them several times, up and down through there. Codes comes up there, wants to give you a ticket for your car being in your yard, yet you got a junkyard and a, and a garbage dump down here, man. And I'm opposed to it.
One question, sir. Your property, where is that located in?
It's behind the, the.
Is it one of those houses?
Summit Lane. It's right on top of the hill, right behind the.
Right on the side of the fence there. If you just turn around, so you just turn around, look behind you.
Yeah, yeah. Right behind the garbage dump.
Okay.
Got cats, rats, everything else come up to there all the time.
If you just turn around, look at the picture, if you would. There you go. Could you identify which one's yours?
Up on the top, very top, right, right there.
In that cul-de-sac up there?
That's it.
Okay.
That's it. But what I'm saying, Mr. George did not say one time, garbage dump, salvage yard, more than a salvage yard.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor or opposition? Yes, sir. Come forward, please.
Please raise your right hand. You swear or promise to tell the truth, the whole, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Tim Benson, and we live at 207, 2037 Summit Lane.
Thank you, sir.
And you can't see it on the map, but it's right next door to Steve's house.
And the cul-de-sac up there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. A semi-cul-de-sac.
The woods are next to ours.
Right.
At our house, so. But we moved in in 2006. At the time, we didn't know that, that there was an actual, like Steve said, a garbage dump, because that's really what it is. We moved in towards the winter time, the smell wasn't that bad. But then, in the summertime, when we started walking, going down the hill, just halfway down the hill, it would just hit you. It was overwhelming, the smell that was coming off the dump. I will say that it's gotten a little bit better, but that doesn't mean anything about the flies, the rats, the, and also too, I'm, as a, as a parent and a member up there, I'm concerned about who's monitoring what's being dumped and what's being done up there. As far as I know, I don't know if anybody's monitoring it. So, that's my concern for the community, and it definitely has affected the prices of houses and stuff on that, on our road, in our community. So, I'm opposed to it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to speak in favor or opposition of the petition? Yes, come forward, please.
Please, please raise your right hand. You swear or promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Catherine Faulner, 2027 Summit Lane.
Thank you.
I don't live as far up the hill. I'm not right next to Joe and Sarah's place. I have occasionally seen cats, but I just need to say that I've never seen rats. So, I know that is a heavily wooded area. I have seen deer, I've seen skunk, I've seen vultures. I don't, I can't, I can't necessarily say that those things are necessarily tied to Joe and Sarah's place. It's a heavily wooded area. So, I feel like I need to say that. I don't have a position one way or the other, other than I know that Joe and Sarah, in the times I've known them, I've moved in at about, 2005, and, you know, they're honest, hardworking people, and if there was seriously a rat problem, my, my judgment of them, that they would, they would address it and resolve it. But I've never seen any rats, as these other two gentlemen have stated, and I live closer than they do. So, unfortunately, I, you know, I do respect these gentlemen's opinion, but they're also backed up to some woods. I feel like I need to state that.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak for or against this appeal petition? Anyone? Mr. Richardson.
Do you swear or promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Myla Rae Benson, and 2037 Summit Lane.
I'm sorry, what's your name again, please?
Myla Rae Benson.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Whenever we have company over, we have a barbecue, and you won't see a fly until the food comes out, and about 15 minutes later, we have over 70 to 150 flies. That is very unsanitary, knowing where the flies are coming from. That is a really big concern for me. And we also know of a couple of people who were here last, the last ordinance meeting, and it was postponed. And they had actually, two of them had lost their homes due to not being able to sell quickly, because they overlooked the dump. And that is going to definitely, as Laverne is trying to grow, we want to recruit and have good family people. And I think that this is a great deterrent. I know that we didn't know that there was a dump there when we bought, but now the fence is all falling down. And from what I've heard from the neighbors, that the Waldrons had put the fence up, but it is not in the ordinance or city rules that the fence has to be maintained. So, many of these stretches of houses, the fence is down, and all they're seeing is all this debris everywhere, junk cars. They said, two of my neighbors said that when they planted, tried to plant some flowers, whatever, nothing will even grow. So, they're not sure what is causing that, but it completely dies. And then, when they were digging up, they found, you know, metal fenders and things like that, where it was just bulldozed over into their yard. So, there's a lot of concerns, a lot of safety concerns for the children.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor or opposition of the petition?
Okay.
Please raise your right hand. You swear or promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Gail Walpoot. I live at 458 on Nashville Highway. I go over to Joe's and them's a lot, and I don't, I don't smell all that that these people claim to smell. I don't see rats running around. So, they keep, they, they keep everything doing, you know. And some reason, their flowers grow, so theirs should grow. So, I think they're good people, and I don't think they'll be picked on like that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to speak in favor or opposition of this petition? Anyone? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, can we ask the Boners to come speak, to pose some questions to them?
We can, and they can speak if they would so like.
You swear or promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sarah Boner, 237 Chaney Boulevard.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, number one, it's not a dump. We parked the garbage trucks there. B&amp;B owns one packing truck and two pickups. We go out around town, pick up residential garbage, put it on that truck, and that truck then goes to waste management, to be dumped. And it's not a dump site. It is a salvage yard, there's a lot of recyclable items from old cars and whatnot. At one time, it went all the way up the hill. So, the people that made comments about flower beds, finding pieces of metal, Frank Nelson owned that at one time, and he was a welder, and he would tear cars apart and stuff, and weld with that. So, it's not surprising, it's just like digging in your yard and finding arrowheads, you're going to find something. As far as the fence pieces down, it's not our fence. That belongs to the houses behind us. And apparently, they didn't even know it, because on Saturday, I got to meet two of the boys that lived directly behind the junkyard, and I heard something, and they were tossing these panels onto the salvage yard. And I asked them why they were doing that, and they said, "Well, ma'am, because your fence fell down, and we're going to have a Halloween party tonight." Well, I told them, I said, "Honey, that's not our fence." Oh, well, they didn't know that. And they probably didn't know that, because when the fence was put up by the builder, it was put up backwards. I thought it was backwards, but the way the fence is, is one foot over their property line, so they could put the fence up in either direction. So, they put it up the way they did, so that it would look best on their side. So, the fence isn't ours, and if there's, if there's something that, that, that we're doing, it really just needs to be resolved. All the fighting in this town is just incredible. Not one time has anyone ever come down to say, "Hey, would you mind doing this, this way?" Or, "Can you move that over there?" Or something, because it's, we really, we're having a party, we don't want people looking at it. Okay. There's never been one time. I don't really know what else to say. If you have any questions.
Any board members have any questions? Proceed.
I do, yeah. Thank you for being willing to come speak, I appreciate that. Since your purchase of the property, have you stopped use as a salvage yard or a garbage disposal operation during that time?
No, sir. No, sir. As a matter of fact, garbage trucks go way back to the late 60s as well. Apparently, there was a dump, the dump site was off of Jefferson Pike, near the bridge in Smyrna, and they used to dump out there, but they would park their trucks out there on that, on that property as well, so.
And when did you purchase the property?
Joe purchased it in 2004, finally.
So, prior to?
Moved out there in 1987.
So, I'm sorry, say that again, Mike.
He moved out there, onto the property. He'd been running it since 1970, you know, with his, with junk cars and whatnot. He had a wrecker service called Bright Star, and he'd bring them out there, onto that place, with Mr. Moore owned it. And he's been working at the same way all these years, it has not stopped.
And both of those businesses have been in operation that, since?
Garbage truck, yeah, garbage trucks and salvage yard has always been the use of that land.
When the property was purchased, did you consider what it was zoned, and look into whether or not it would be grandfathered in, based on its previous use when you purchased it?
No, because when we were, in 2002, the state came out, and they informed us then that it was a grandfathered property. And then, in 2004, we got a phone call from a neighbor saying, "Hey, your name is on the, on the agenda at the workshop, you better come down here." So, we did, and the discussion was the property. And Sherri said that it's, everybody knows it's a grandfathered property, it's been there since before Laverne was even a city. So, no search, zoning didn't even cross my mind.
And do you have any paperwork to show, or any documents that? or any documents that show the continuation of the business over that period of time?
No, sir, I'm afraid I don't.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Any other questions for the board members?
During the 2008, 2009, when we're discussing zoning of all properties in Laverne, you are unaware of the zoning map that was going on?
No, uh-uh. No, we had never heard anything about that. I didn't know anything about it.
Question, I have. Any questions?
Was a letter sent out to everybody, or?
It was well documented through the presses and public information, yes.
Oh, see, I'm not a big person on getting a newspaper either. I'm not very impressed with only a half a story. There's always something else that's not in the story. So I don't get a newspaper either.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. There being no other individuals that have comments at this time, I'm going to... Yes, sir.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Paul Hill. I live at 157 Nelson Drive. I moved there approximately 18 years ago. This place was in operation then. The odor, the rats and such, have been there all the time. I find it kind of odd, if I may say, that in 2004, someone said, "You're on the docket," or, lack of a better word, to, at the planning commission or whatever you need to get out of there. But in 2008, don't know about the rezoning. That is my concern right there. I pass by there at least twice a day, five days a week. It's an eyesore. It's unsanitary, I do believe, in my estimation. Just like the previous person here said a while ago, what is being dumped there? Do we know? Do we know as a city? Do we know as people in the community? There was a statement made that no one had stopped and made a complaint. I would probably fall on deaf ears. You know, I mean, if I'm running a business and I got complaints from Joe, somebody that I don't even know. You know, I'm running my business. Until Coates or whomever comes down on me, then I would believe that I am continuing to do the right thing. So what I'm saying as a concerned citizen, that this should be addressed. I do not see, at the present time, like the attorney, he didn't ever once mention about the garbage, whatever. These people have a real problem that live behind there. I've been up there. I have friends that live up there. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We want to be totally fair on this issue. So although, I'll be glad to open up the public hearing again if there's anyone else that would like to speak. Sir, step forward, please. You've already received the oath. We'll continue.
Could you just state your name again for the record?
Tim Benson, again. About, it was two years ago, the smell was so bad, I contacted Channel 4. And Channel 4 came up to see what was going on. So the smell is bad. I mean, it smells like, when I take my trash to Jefferson Pike, and when I drive through there, that's the smell that you could smell in our community, just walking down the street. And kids going trick-or-treating, things like that. That's the smell that I'm concerned with. So it is a problem.
Thank you.
That's it.
One last call for anyone else to speak. Come forward, please.
Do you swear or promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Julia Hill. I live at 157 Nelson Drive. We have been up through Summit many times. We had a very dear friends that lived, I believe it was 2021 Summit. It was actually the first corner lot there. I don't remember the name of that little street right there beside it. They raised yorkies. They had the backyard was chain link in. Rats still come through and would crawl, dig up under to get in. They were scared to let the yorkies out. Actually, the gentleman that owned the house was going to be here. He's out of town on a funeral. They even put up a wooden privacy fence. They wouldn't let the yorkies out because of the rats, wolf rats, whatever you want to call them. The smell is, at times in the summer, unbearable. I don't have a problem with Joe and Sarah. They used to pick our trash up. I do know, because she has told me so, not only was it the trash service, they did recycling. The thing about it is, number one, the health hazard. What's on the property, it needs to be cleaned up. If it was my backyard, it wouldn't look like that because Coates would be on me every day. And as far as not knowing, as far as zoning and meetings, Joe and Sarah both have been very, very good as far as coming to city meetings on a monthly basis. It's not something that has just come up out of the woodwork yesterday. This has been going on for years. Because she has stood in my driveway and talked to me about it. But something does need to be done.
Thank you. Last call. Okay, we will not accept any more testimony then at this point. We have all the material information that we have at our hands here on which to base an opinion, a vote. I will...
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, can we ask the staff some questions?
Yes, certainly.
Kristin or somebody, can you talk about the 2008, 2009 rezoning that Mr. Coates is talking about? Would that have any bearing on the legality of use if it was legal, noncompliant use and continued through?
In 2008, 2009, there was not a rezoning. What there was, was the city put together an official zoning map for the city. And when they did that, they took the information that they had on file, there's a lot of paper maps and things, and they put a map together and also made a digital format of it, but put it up front at all the meetings for, I don't know the exact time period. But they put it at the meetings. So any meetings that people came to, they sent a zoning map for the city. And what Mr. Coates was talking about was, there was a timeframe that we posted it. So if anyone had trouble with it or problems with the zoning of their property as shown on the map, they could come in and question that. And then after the city adopted that map, there was a one-year timeframe that they could come to this board and have this board look at their facts and not really have a rezoning, but get the zoning corrected if there was an issue with the zoning. It was not a rezoning. It was just putting together an official zoning map for the city.
Okay. My understanding of the statute, though, is that it wouldn't really have mattered what the zoning is if it was legal, noncompliant use? Okay?
That's correct. Thank you.
One more question.
Yes.
Can someone tell us when it was zoned agricultural? What's the start date? So Mr. George used February 1990. Do people agree that that's what it is?
I have a hard copy document that was signed by A.C. Puckett, junior mayor, December 8, 1981. It's the oldest zoning ordinance I can find for the city of Laverne. So that was in place as of, like I said, 1981.
So it's zoned agricultural in 1981?
We would have to look at a paper map and see what, you know, what that parcel was zoned then. But regardless, if the business was operating prior to 1981, at least, it would be considered a legal, nonconforming lot if it were, in fact, operating continuously since the '60s, so.
This is probably for Mr. Beard. Is, if this is legal, noncompliant use, so it's operating as an I-3 salvage yard, garbage disposal, is it operating legally right now?
If it's a legal, nonconforming use, my understanding is regardless of what the current zoning is, it's a legal use of the land based on the fact that it was there prior to or it's on an ordinance going into effect.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions?
Mr. Beard, has there been any other violations or complaints prior to this one in 2008?
I do, I'm unaware of any complaints in 2008. The complaint, when it came to me, was in the matter of a zoning question. And in the complaint form, it stated, "Is this property properly zoned?" And that's what I sought an opinion on from the planner at the time.
Okay. Based upon what we've heard and what we've seen, I will now entertain a motion that the board would like to make to either accept or deny the appeal. Would someone care to make a motion?
I understand the issues of people living close to this. I don't see any evidence that shows us that it's anything other than legal, noncompliant use based on the city statute. I don't see what we can do otherwise. I move that we accept the appeal.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of accepting the appeal, raise your hand. All against the appeal? We have a tie.
Chairman, if I may, would you please do a roll call vote? Call each member and ask for a yes or no vote.
Be glad to. Be glad to do that. Okay. Mr. Stanford? Yea or nay?
Yes.
Graham, Mr. Coates?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
And myself, Mr. Carger? No. We do have one member of the board that is not present at this meeting. I would ask our city attorney for guidance at this point.
I believe our bylaws say go to the next meeting. Hold on, one second, please. Okay, the motion fails. But if, what our bylaws say is if all seven members of the board are not present at a meeting, and the board is unable to adopt a motion to approve an application or approve with a special condition or deny it, the application shall be deferred until the next meeting of the board. If all seven members of the board are present and unable to adopt a motion on the application, it shall be deemed denied. All seven members are not present, the motion fails. And it can be deferred until the next meeting.
All right, we will take up this matter at the next scheduled meeting at that time. And Mr. Richardson, as soon as you can, I would ask you to make the minutes of this meeting available to our, Kred Pollock, our absent. So he has plenty of time to study the issue and visit the property, et cetera.
Mr. Chairman, this is...
We've got two items on the agenda. This will be item number one. So I believe we would need to have a vote on item number two.
I was considering both of the, together because it's the same property and it's the same owner. We can vote on them separately.
We have to vote on these separately because we have two separate businesses.
All right, we will do that. I'm sorry?
The motion had to defer.
Would you have a motion and second to defer?
Yes. Okay. I will entertain a motion, then, to defer this to the next regularly scheduled meeting. And at that time, we will take up both items scheduled for tonight, then, Old Business. Do I hear such a motion?
I'll motion to defer.
Okay. Do I hear a second? I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, everybody that came this evening.
You need to do number two now. You need to do the second one.
Take a vote on the second one? All right. The second issue here is Joe's place. Again, the owners are Joe and Sarah Boner. Do I hear a motion to approve or deny the appeal for item number two, Old Business?
I will motion to accept the appeal with the understanding that it's legal, noncompliant use.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No. Well, let's do this. Why don't you do a roll call?
Let's do a roll call, then. Okay, Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Coates?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
And myself? No. So both of these cases of Old Business will be discussed, deferred to the next meeting.
We need to make a motion. We need to make a motion for defer.
I shall make the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Again, I want to thank everybody that appeared tonight on behalf of this situation, those that spoke in favor and those that spoke in opposition. Personally, I want to really thank you for taking an interest in your city. This is what every city needs. And thank you very much for that. And there being no further business, I state that this meeting is now adjourned.
Call the meeting to order for the Laverne Planning Commission, October 25, regular meeting. Proper quorum has been determined. I'd like to divert from our schedule right now and give a moment of condolences to our fellow vice chairman, Mr. Parker. Here, a family member has passed away. So we'd like to extend our condolences to him and his family. At this time, we'd like to have the approval minutes from September 27, 2011, of our regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. First, we have Old Business, Final Platte, Resubdivision Lot 10, Heritage Valley, 9.4 acres. Property located at 808 Park Court South. Tax map 14 North. Group B, parcel 34. And tax map 18C, group A, parcel 38. R3 zoning district, property owned by Bruce Eichbauer and the Heritage Valley Home Owners Association. Mr. Brown?
Oh, either way. Once again...
I'm sorry, Ms....
Costanzo.
I was trying to keep you playing that name.
It's Costanzo. It's got less letters than it sounds like, actually. Once again, we have been asked to have this item deferred to the November 2011 Planning Commission meeting at the request of Mr. Eichbauer, who has, still has, hasn't quite worked out his ownership issues. So he's asked us to please defer, once again, to the next meeting.
Okay, we have a deferral. Next, we have New Business, Final Platte, Resubdivision Lot 85, Hall's Estate, 0.9 acres. Property located at 113 Markham Lane. Tax map 18H, group B, parcel 46. R3 zoning district, property owned by Timothy and Sharon Smith.
Okay, the applicant is requesting to subdivide the property known as Lot 85, shown up here. There is an existing residence on 85A. They're wanting to subdivide the northern portion off to create a second, a new buildable lot for future construction. Since the Planning Commission workshop, all technical items have been addressed.
Mr. Chairman, all of them addressed. I'll make a motion to accept this meeting.
I have a motion to accept. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion's been second, all approved?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have site plan, McKissick parking lot addition, 18.94 acres, property located at 401 Mason Road, tax map 29, parcel 5.16. I-2 zoning district, property owned by McKissick Specialty Care.
Okay, here we have a newly submitted site plan that shows where the landscaping has been amended to better reflect the, the requirements for the transitional buffer per the, per the, the planning commission's request at the workshop. All the technical items have been addressed, with the exception of the actual numbers for the tree count. If you look at the table, they are about half shy on the large evergreen, and they, they meet about two-thirds of the medium evergreen. They decided to go ahead and add, per the request at the workshop, another, I think it's about thirty-some, 32 medium evergreen shrubs that will go along the northern boundary of the new parking lot to help better screen the, from the residents on the other side. And in addition, they have moved the 26, there were 26 medium evergreen trees up in the northwestern corner. They have since moved them to meld in between the new medium shrubs. This is in the area underneath the, the telephone lot or the, the utility lines. So they have moved those to create a, an even thicker buffer for the, for the residents. So while they don't meet the actual tree count numbers, I think that they've taken into consideration the numbers that, that were requested and actually better moved some of the exist, the, the proposed, so.
My understanding is they've taken care of a, I mean, they've taken care of a, a primary buffer, and they're working on what be, what would be considered a sub, because it looks like two levels there.
Right, they, because they, they didn't quite meet the numbers that were, that were required, they've decided, they've moved some of the proposed landscaping from the northwest corner, which wasn't going to affect where the new proposed lot is going, since that's on the northeastern side. So they've moved that bunch to fill in the gaps right, right where Kyle's showing. So you're gonna have, we're gonna actually have two layers now of additional buffer, the medium evergreen shrubs as well as the trees, so.
But in, in total, there was required to be 317, and they now have 349 plus trees, bushes, evergreens.
Right, so, so they exceed some and are low on some. But again, because you do have the, the ability to modify or waive or alter the provisions of the transitional buffer due to site considerations, which the presence of utility lines would certainly be a reasonable consideration, so.
Okay, and I do remember that from my workshop. Taking that into consideration, do I hear a motion? Or, I'm sorry, are there any questions? Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept as submitted.
Okay, I have a motion to accept as submitted. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have a bond listed for credit.
Mr. Chairman, everyone should have a bond listed in front of them. Everything is up to date. We do have one, everyone will probably notice on Blair Oaks, that's October 30th, 2011, that will expire. I have talked to the developer and the bank on that, should receive it any day now. Just, just still haven't received it just yet. I have talked to the developer on McFarlane Point, Section 12. I know it's in November, but that's the middle, so it's coming upon us pretty quickly. It should, should be in the process, given that one extended. And if you'll notice, there was a change. I took the Woodsong Sections 1, 2, and 3 that did get approval from the Board of Mayor and Alderman contingent on the couple items that, that needed to be completed. Everything did get completed by the developer, so that bond actually has, has changed over to a maintenance bond. So I wanted to drop that down, separate it from the others, so it's less confusing. And you'll see that the date on that is October 4th, 2012, and that's when that letter of credit will be good until, and, and once that's done, that's, that's, that's it with that, those sections. It's, it's the city's at that time fully.
Are there any other questions from the board? Again, as usual, I'd like to extend our gratitude to the staff for their efficiency on it, and we are adjourned.